Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Workshop here at Kennedy High School. We'll begin tonight with a silent prayer. Commissioner Hernandez, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, everyone. First thing on the agenda is Principal's Report, Mr. Johnston. Are we going to see a presentation?
I think it's still kind of like uploading.
All right. So when they're ready, we'll...
Let me just...
While we're waiting for that, we'd like to say thank you for having us this evening and maybe acknowledge a lot of people here tonight. Do you have a lot of your staff here tonight?
I have quite a few of the staff members here. There's a few events going on in the building, so they may be at the volleyball game or throughout the campus.
If the staff of Kennedy High School would like to stand, we'd like to acknowledge you being here. Thank you for being here. And any students from Kennedy High School here?
No, I don't believe we have any students.
All right. They're all busy in the gym.
Absolutely. Well, Commissioners, welcome to Kennedy High School. Thanks so much for being here. For my principal, my brief Principal's Report, what I thought I'd do was I thought I'd revisit the last time we had a workshop here. I talked a little bit about creating a college-going culture in the building. And that has continued. And what, and we've added things to it, we've changed things from it. So I just wanted to give a little bit of an update. And it also will provide a little bit of context to also talk about things we're doing in regards to SAT performance and graduation rates and other timely things like that. In terms of creating a college-going culture, basically, research indicates that specific actions are essential in helping students attain college, especially first-generation students, of which many of our students are first-generation students to go to college in their families. It's aligned with other efforts that we've spoken about many times, including making sure that students are college and career-ready upon completion of high school, and such things as the development of individual student success plans. Okay? Now, if we're going to be talking about making sure that kids are college and career-ready, one of the biggest things facing our students is successfully completing the SAT. Now, I know that the, our performance on the SAT has been the subject of discussion amongst the board over the last several weeks and months. Obviously, there is room for improvement, and we have kind of established quite a few strategies that we're going to implement this year to try and address those things. One is that we have an SAT boot camp planned. This is in the spring, right before our 11th graders take the SAT. We did this last year. We had over 60 students participate. This is made possible by Gear Up. And as Gear Up has followed that cohort of students, now they are getting to our seniors and our juniors and our seniors and really preparing them for the SAT. And they've made this possible. This is a weekend program. Students volunteer to come in, and they, it's basically just what it says, a boot camp to get them ready for that SAT. We have continued to offer English SAT prep and Math SAT prep, half-year courses here at Kennedy High School. Students can take those also as preparation for the SAT. And while they're doing that, they're also earning high school credit towards graduation. Probably one of the most exciting strategies that we have to offer, and it's rather simple, is linking student college board accounts to Khan Academy. The college board has partnered with Khan Academy in a way that, once students have taken either the SAT or the PSAT, they can link their college board account to Khan Academy. And what's created by Khan Academy is an individualized online SAT prep course based on the results that that student had on the PSAT or the SAT previously. So every student's individualized Khan Academy SAT prep course is a little bit different from every other student's because it's tailored to that student. And there already is some initial research from this partnership that shows a rather minimal amount of time, if students spend on Khan Academy with this prep course, that it has some rather significant results. We're talking increasing test scores anywhere from 100 to 200 points with as little as 30 hours of time on Khan Academy. And this time can be taken by students anytime that it fits into their schedule. So what we're doing with our guidance department is we're going to make sure that all of our students, most importantly, our 11th and 12th graders, because they're the ones that are going to take the SAT the soonest, but we want to do this for all of our students, get their college board accounts linked with Khan Academy so they can take advantage of this free and pretty significant resource that's available to them. In addition to improving SAT scores, what we're doing, district-wide, we have a rather large number of curriculum revision committees working on revising our curriculum documents across a whole bunch of different content areas to align it not only with the common core, but in turn with the expectations of the redesigned SAT. Along with that, on the building level, we're going to be offering our teachers professional development on the redesigned SAT and how to connect what they're doing instructionally in the classroom with what's expected on the SAT. And we're able to do this through resources that are provided by the college board for educators. I've listed, you know, on the screen, there are a whole bunch of different topics that they offer resources for connecting social studies to what's expected on the SAT, science, different parts of the math test, and what we can be doing instructionally. And the resources that are provided by the college board allow educators to facilitate a discussion, to facilitate professional development, either as an entire school or within departments. And so that's what we're going to emphasize with our time this year as a staff. And then finally, we're going to be sending staff members out to sort of like train the trainer workshops that are being provided by CAS in conjunction with the college board. We can send a staff member out to learn about these things, and they're trained to be able to come back to our staff and train our staff. So there's a lot of resources out there to help schools improve their SAT scores, and what we're doing, we're looking to try to take advantage of as many of those opportunities as we can. In terms of talking about creating a college-going culture, we'd also have to talk about our graduation rates. Now, the state uses a four-year cohort rate. While our rate from 2016 to 2017 four-year rate hasn't been released yet, it should be coming any time now. But the most recent one was 2016. In the five years previous, okay, we have steadily increased our graduation rate. Is it where we want to be? No. I expect that percentage to continue to rise over the next five years. But I think it's a point of pride for myself and my staff that it is growing steadily in the right direction, and it continues to grow. And we're going to look to continue to make that happen. In terms of creating a college-going culture, we'd also have to talk about our various opportunities for our students to earn dual credit, not only earn credit towards their graduation, but also earn some credits towards their college degrees, if that's what they're going to pursue. And we'd be talking about our Advanced Placement courses, our UConn Early College Experience courses, and our courses that we offer in conjunction with Naukuck Valley. Currently, we offer 12 Advanced Placement courses. They're offered throughout the curriculum, science, math, social studies, English, even world languages. All students have access to AP. It is not, it is not a program that's only available to SORE students. SORE students certainly take part in it, but it is an open enrollment process. Certainly, we try to steer students into the AP courses that they'd be most successful, given their strengths in certain content areas, but it is an open enrollment process. Success in AP courses at the high school level is a valid predictor of success in college, so we'd like to increase our participation in those AP courses as much as possible. In addition, the syllabi that we have to submit to the college board is audited and certified by them so that we know that the work being performed is college-level. And even the U.S. Department of Education advises that college selection committees believe that individuals who take these difficult classes have more appeal for admission. So if we want to set up our students to be successful after high school, if they're going to pursue a career in college, we want to make them as attractive to admission committees as we possibly can. And part of that is offering these experiences with these college-level courses. We offer a wide variety of courses. I'm not going to read off all the courses, but they're available. There's multiple courses in multiple content areas. In addition to the Advanced Placement courses, we also offer courses through UConn Early College Experience. We have both our American Studies Program, which is a combined English and social studies course, environmental science, statistics, and Italian. In many ways, these UConn courses are even more attractive to students than the Advanced Placement courses. When students take these UConn Early College Experience courses, they are actually enrolled in UConn. They are UConn students. Upon completion of the course with whatever grade has been agreed upon for that particular course, they get a college transcript. They, some of these students are, already have a college transcript from the University of Connecticut before they even have a high school diploma. And these are credits that they can take to nearly any university throughout the country. And of course, we also have courses that are dual-credit options through agreements with Naukuck Valley. We currently have two courses, Introduction to Business and Principles of Marketing. Mr. McGraw, who's one of my staff members, actually teaches, who's here this evening, actually teaches two of these two courses. These are very popular courses. They're currently completely, fully enrolled. We can't squeeze another student into them. And again, this is, this is an attractive option to students because it is free of charge to them, and they can be walking out of here with college credit. And in fact, we're even, we're in the beginning stages of discussions with Naukuck Valley where we may have a very exciting opportunity to significantly expand the number of college credits that Kennedy students are going to be able to earn. And it's a, it's a really nice relationship, given the proximity of Kennedy High School with NBCC. In terms of these college courses, we administered 242 AP exams last year. 108 of our students are currently enrolled in UConn's ECE program. That's 40% higher than large school, than the large school average. And these are statistics provided to us from UConn. It's more than 1.5 times as many as other schools in our DURC, and it's more than three times the New Haven County average. So again, it's a good sign, the number of students we have participating. In total, we have 48 students taking those two Naukuck Valley community courses right Other efforts in terms of preparing students for post-secondary education. We actually offer students two SAT school day opportunities, one in the fall and one in the spring. The April administration of the SAT is for our grade 11 students in the fall, just in a little bit over a month. In October, we, there's a fall administration of the SAT, and that is for grade 12 students. So students coming through Waterbury Public Schools get two cracks at the SAT, one in the spring of their 11th grade year, and then in the following fall of their 12th grade year. That October administration also includes the rest of the school, though. Our 10th and 11th grade students are taking the PSAT. Our 9th graders are taking the PSAT 8, 9. And again, all of these efforts are to get students prepared, and hopefully, so that they'll do better on the SAT. Through the college board, we also get a report, something called AP Potential. It outlines students, based on their performance on, say, the PSAT, as, say, a 10th grader. And given how they did on certain sections of that PSAT, which AP courses they would be most likely to be successful on. So normally, we're always looking for students, to encourage them to take AP classes, but what the AP Potential Report does is it gives us a way to check ourselves so that we're not allowing the student that might be a great fit for a particular AP course to slip through the cracks. And so between our own efforts at encouraging students to take these AP courses and also kind of looking at the feedback that we're getting from the college board, we're able to really identify those students. In the fall each year in October, we have a college fair right here during the school day. This year, it's October 27th. 66 colleges are expected to attend. But that's not the only time students see colleges in the building. We have quite a few others that aren't necessarily here on the college fair day, but that they'll make visits with groups of students throughout, at various times throughout the school year. We also have onsite acceptance days with colleges and universities, most notably with Naukuck Valley Community College, where they will send a representative or two here to the school. They can meet with students, with their paperwork, and on the spot, accept them and begin the admissions process. Again, it's breaking down any barriers that students might have to education beyond high school. This year, through the efforts of both Gear Up and our guidance department, we're going to be able to offer a lot of help to students and particularly their families with the college application process, with workshops and individualized meetings, both during the school day and after the school day. And probably most significantly, we're going to be able to help parents and families with the FAFSA application. What we've found over time is that that is probably the biggest hurdle for many of our students and their parents to deal with. The financial aid application process can be very daunting because it gets complicated, it gets very tricky to understand, and Gear Up has been great working in conjunction with our guidance department. They have already planned workshops that are going to take place regarding the FAFSA application process at Naukuck Valley on Saturdays and on evenings. In addition, we're going to have individual appointments available for parents, for students and their, excuse me, and their families, right here at Kennedy, both during the school day, where Gear Up mentors can meet with them, our guidance counselors can meet with them, appointments after school. And the idea is to really help them take care of the financial aid application as soon as possible and get it done in a timely manner. And then finally, the last thing I would like to highlight is, before we can really get a student here at Kennedy thinking about college, we've got to connect them with the school. And making that connection with the school, where kids want to come here every single day, is one that I take a great deal of pride in, especially in the efforts of my staff. What I've kind of put up on the screen, it's titled "Something for Everyone." I kind of, I say this to parents almost at every orientation program we have. The idea is that we have something for everyone, in terms of every kid that steps through these doors. We all know that, like every other high school in the area, we offer a wide variety of varsity and sub-varsity interscholastic sports, and that's fantastic. We have a large rate of participation among our student body. However, we have a whole bunch of other extracurricular activities that are available. They are far too numerous for me to speak about every single one. But there literally is something for everyone, and that list of clubs and groups expands every single year. Students are continually coming to me or to another administrator or to a guidance counselor with ideas. Hey, you know, wouldn't it be... Last year, we had a group of students who wanted to start an urban dance team, an urban dance club. I was like, well, great, you know? All you need is, you need an advisor. You need to find a teacher that's willing to be your supervisor. We'll find some space for you, and you guys can meet periodically. And sure enough, within two days, they found a teacher that was willing to do it. They came back to me, and they've been meeting regularly. But the idea is, if we can, if we can get kids where they feel comfortable coming to school, they're motivated to come to school, even if it's something that is loosely connected to their academics, if they're comfortable here, that might be half the battle. And then we can reach them and hopefully help them achieve their goals after high school. I think a lot of the credit goes to my students, who are willing to come up with these ideas to not only engage themselves, but to engage other students, and then my staff, who is willing to supervise these activities. Because if you look at this list, there's a few, there's a few things up there where there are stipends associated with those. But the vast majority, over 90% of the things listed on that list, it's purely voluntary. It's time that teachers are giving up so that they can show that they're invested in their students' lives, and I think that pays dividends in the classroom. That was my brief little spiel. Obviously, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Wow. Thank you for your enthusiasm. Great job.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thierio.
Yes, a great job. Well, well done. I like your ideas for improving the scores, and we certainly need to improve those scores. I hate to be like a broken record, but I am. You know, our scores at Willby on the SATs were 4.7. They were 6% at Crosby and Kennedy, who came on top with 8%. So that means that 92% of our students failed. And to see you come here and offer ideas of ways to improve this is very enlightening and reassuring. You having been one of my students in the sixth grade some years ago at the middle school, I don't think I could fill your footsteps right now or your moccasins doing the great job that you're doing. So keep up the good work. I'm not here to kill the messenger. I'm here to expose the problem and move on and come up with some positive initiatives and reforms so that we can at least get close to the state average in terms of the score. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions for Principal Johnston? Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Mr. Johnston, you talk about the graduation rate and how you've increased it 10 points in X amount of years. So what do you attribute that? How did you do that?
Well, I think there's a variety of, there were a variety of efforts that helped with that. One, I think it's getting out in front of the idea of graduating early with students, starting as early as 9th grade, talking about, here's what you need to graduate. You will need 22 credits. You will need credits in, so many in English, so many in social studies, so many in science. It sounds rather simple, but many of our 9th graders aren't thinking that way. And so we try to address it as early as possible, trying to address 9th graders that are already in danger of not earning a minimum of five credits their freshman year, addressing that as soon as the end of the first marking period, talking to those students, what's getting in the way? What can we, what can we do to help them earn those credits? Because what we found was that if students aren't earning a minimum of at least five credits their freshman year, what happens is they dug themselves such a large hole that they can't possibly get out of it and graduate on time. The online, the edgenuity courses that we offer for credit retrieval, that has helped a number of students who did not put in the effort when they were younger. They've started putting the effort, so now they're putting in the effort, but they still got ground to make up, and they've matured, and they're able, we're able to provide the time after school and online for them to earn those credits back. I think that's helped significantly. And it's simply the idea of really just making a conscious effort in regards to that. It's not going to happen unless we are making real explicit effort to make sure that students are graduating on time. Now, be that as it may, the, probably the most significant obstacle in terms of pushing that number steadily higher is the trans latency of our student population. As students come and go, some, very often, we're getting students in their third year of high school, and they're coming to us from outside of Waterbury. I mean, this happens all the time, and large numbers of these students, and they have no credits. They're not going to graduate in four years, and yet they're counting towards our four-year graduation rate, our cohort rate. And so there's things like that that do get in the way, you know? But that's just the world in which we live, and we've got to do the best with our students to have them earn as many credits as they possibly can.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you very much for that, for that narrative. Is my mic on?
It's yours, I think?
All right. Well, you can hear me, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. First of all, I was very pleased to physically see, I mean, I've seen the architectural drawings...
Thank you. The architectural drawings of the building behind us, but it was just, now that I've gotten the opportunity to actually see the whole campus, you know, completion, and that's what I refer to it as, a campus. I think you definitely physically have that, you know, atmosphere of Kennedy being a campus, so it just looks really, really good.
Thank you.
My question is this: What do we do here at Kennedy to welcome or to make that transition from 8th grade to 9th grade, a smooth transition for students? What, I heard you mention orientation, but what exactly are we doing with that?
Well, the orientation program that we normally hold in the summer is an evening. Usually, it takes place a week to two weeks right before school begins. It's an evening in which we have parents, students, family members. They'll come into the building. We'll meet with them, along with many of our staff members. We'll begin our evening in the auditorium. Oftentimes, we let students know what to expect on the first day, some of our expectations. It's a great chance for parents to ask questions. And then probably the thing that maybe is the most useful is then they break up into small groups, and they take tours of the building led by staff members, and often led by staff members and older students. And what happens is, the students at that point have their schedules. They're able to go around the building and see, okay, I'm in room 201 this period, and here's where I'll be moving. And although, you know, sometimes that first day is very physically overwhelming, just spatially, everything looks the same. And it's not to say that we don't have students getting lost that first day, but the attempt there is just to let them know that they're welcome in the building. Very often, for me, the best part of the evening is the fact that many parents linger. You know, we usually have cookies and refreshments available in the cafeteria, but they'll stick around to ask questions, and it's really great just to get to know some of the parents and students on that evening. So that's a, that's a very simple thing that we do, just in terms of the orientation program.
Okay. Okay. Now, getting back to graduation rates, I like that steady improvement. We would like for it to be in the 90s, but as long as, you know, I see that improvement, you know, I'm okay. We need our students to graduate, and if we're creating that atmosphere of college, the more we send to college, the better. So I'm with you there, and just keep plugging along with that graduate, graduation rate, but we need that, you know, we need that. I'm not saying, I'm not picking on you, you know, it's the citywide. We need that graduation rate higher. But thank you very much, you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Keep up the great work, everybody. Okay. Next on the agenda is the... Next on the agenda is the Financial Reality Fair, Paul White. Oh, he's right here. There he is.
A little less than three thousand dollars. So what do you think would be the cheapest?
So if you're looking for the cheapest, we could just do a bed frame set, then you could add in a mattress on top of that.
Okay.
That would be the shortest.
Well, I, I need some other stuff, too. What other options do you have?
So we've got furniture, we've got dining room sets, we could do Craigslist, tables and chairs, just chairs. We could do the Craigslist. So this is already used.
Do you have any packages?
Yeah. If you want a package, for the Craigslist stuff, it's not packaged, it's all individual. Comes a mattress set, dining set, sofa and loveseat. You can do the higher quality furniture packages, a little nicer option, more payment.
Okay, um, I'm just going to go with the cheaper one then.
The cheaper option, full package, all right.
So, no, no, the cheaper, I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to buy stuff off Craigslist, yeah. I'm going to get the...
Be careful, you don't know what's living in there.
It's all right, I'll clean them before I get them. Yeah, I'll clean them before I get them.
So I think you need a...
I'll get a, I'll get this bed right here.
Okay.
Nice bed.
All right.
Got to get a table, so we'll go with the cheap table right there.
Okay.
And then, um...
I think that includes the chairs, too.
Okay, all right. I need a dresser, do you have any dressers?
We have dressers. I don't think we have a dresser in this stadium.
So I won't buy a dresser?
They're just going to have to imagine a kind of dresser somewhere.
All right, I'll, I'll get a sofa, yeah. What other options do you have? Yeah, I'll get a sofa.
So these are the Craigslist sofas.
I'll grab the two hundred dollar sofa.
Okay, all right. So how do you want to pay for those? Do you want to do it out of your checking account? Do you want to put it on your credit card? Buy for a loan?
What's my, um, oh, so how much is it? What's my total? It depends on my total.
We have students from all the high schools in Waterbury who are participating. I would say there's close to five hundred. They are coming through this experience with a portfolio where they select a career choice, they selected a starting salary, and then they have a budget where they have to walk through different booths to purchase a lot of different necessities in life, and then they're also offered a lot of luxuries. And at the end, they have to go to a financial counselor and figure out how they are going to, like, rectify their budget.
So that's going to be about a hundred and fifty-three bucks. All right, so your credit card payment is going to be a hundred and fifty-four dollars a month.
Okay.
Yeah, ouch.
I thought it was like five thousand, I was about to cry.
All right. Now, let me show you something on, on this credit card. You're paying sixteen percent on five thousand dollar balance, over five thousand dollar balance. The closest one in this table here, five thousand fifteen percent. If you make the minimum payment of three percent, it's going to take you over fourteen years to pay that off. Okay? So, this, this is also, because it's so close to your credit limit of five thousand two forty-three, it's also affecting your credit score. If you have an emergency, you've got nothing really to, you're going to go with the link on the credit card payment because you're going to need that money to pay your emergency expenses. So, let's see how you did on the cash flow here.
I think you did some extra payments on your credit card.
Do you know what, well, is that what the number was?
Three thousand, I think, yeah, thirty-one sixty-six, I believe. I'm not sure.
So I'm just adding the one fifty-four to that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. A part-time job would be a good idea.
Brings it down to about, what's that, seventy-seven dollars?
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right there as far as cash flow coming in versus going out. Let me just figure out what you got here, too, all right? All of these items, so, one sixty-four plus seventy-seven. It's two hundred forty-one dollars in your savings account.
Yep, this is what you have to pay back. So what things?
And, here's the thing, too, you're working a part-time job?
Yeah.
Your part-time job is bringing in four hundred thirty-three dollars. You've got net income coming in, you're, you're, what you're making is just seventy-seven dollars more than what you're spending. So if you didn't have this part-time job, your cash flow would be negative. So, what you may want to do, are you splitting, you writing to someone?
No.
No? You may want to look for a roommate or give you another four hundred dollars a month in your pocket. Your auto loan, looks like that's one of the least expensive cars. Your nightlife, your food. Yeah, there's not much here. Your furniture loan is three hundred ninety-one dollars.
Yeah.
You may want to take a look at your, at this furniture loan. That's, that, that's a lot of money to be spending on furniture. If you get some secondhand stuff instead of new, that would bring this down as well. But those are some of the things that I would do. You really got to look at how you're spending the money because you're working awful hard up here to earn that money. You're enjoying it down here, but you're going to be awful tight if you have any type of emergency or unexpected expenses pop up. Okay?
As a financial counselor, I will ask them a lot of times, what was their biggest challenge they learned today? And I'd say ninety, ninety percent of the time, they say to me, was living within their budget. They found it very challenging. Yeah.
I think it was a great success. We're thrilled to have the credit union bring this to the city of Waterbury. We've been working with them for the past few years to, to get them to do so, and so we're very, we're very thankful to that, and, and we look forward to doing this again next year.
It's important to do well in the academics, but it's going to be equally important that they do well in things that there isn't a formal test for in life. And being able to manage your money is probably the ongoing test that we all face as adults. From the day we get, we become adults till the day we leave this earth, we have to manage our money, be able to make decisions and live.
This was definitely helpful. I would definitely do this again. Do they have this? Like, if I already have my career, I could come here? Like, because it's def, it's definitely helpful.
This is a good experience. I'm happy I went through it.
This is footage from the Financial Reality Fair that we had last May. We had over, just about five hundred students go through this process where they spend a day, they, prior to the workshop, they're assigned a career and a salary, and then they have to spend the day figuring out how they create a budget and how they live on that money. So it takes what we, as adults, do every day, but to have, give kids the real-life experience of that, and they spend the day trying to buy furniture, housing, transportation, food, and entertainment, and realize what it does cost to live in this day and age. This is done as a reality check so that they can start building proper financial planning now so that in the future, they are able to have sustainable salaries and lives in the future. We, we will be doing this again in April. Commissioner Awad was instrumental in bringing that to Waterbury, and as I said, we've had five hundred students do this. We'll be having another five hundred students, and we would love to have your support again on this, and would love for you to volunteer and witness this. It'll be next April, we'll be doing this. And when, I will send this out to everyone so you could watch the video. But it's a, it's great because each student learns more about what it costs to live. One went home and said, I have to thank my mom because they realize, suddenly realized the sacrifices parents have to make to give their kids things. And again, we know how credit card debt, student debt, all of those things affect young people today, and the more that our students can learn about that as they move to adulthood, we'll be able to prepare them, that they have these tools ahead of them so they don't get caught up in situations where they have thousands of dollars of debt and only a couple hundred dollars a month in income.
Great. I heard good things about it. It's great. Any comments? Thank you. Oh, comment? Charles? Commissioner Stango?
Yeah, sure, thank you. I'm just wondering, as you said, five hundred students, how the five hundred is determined? Where, how are they chosen?
These are students who are currently enrolled in business courses across the five high schools. And then, from there, it's primarily organized with our business education teachers who support this, the personal finance classes that go on. And so from that, we establish who, who goes, and so we'll be able to cycle through and bring through a different five hundred students because it's a great experience once, but we do want to spread it through as many students as possible, and it takes a year of planning to get, to get this together because they do spend time with financial planners. This is supported through the local credit union, through the federal credit union as well as the Work, Workforce Development Board and Bridge to Success.
Okay, so these are students who are business majors, more or less?
Well, they've taken, it's among the courses that they take here in our district, and it again provides a real-life look at how finance works and personal finance works.
All right. Thank you.
Great, and I think it's great that we have such great partners in the community and really want to thank Bridge to Success and the bank and the other one you said, so...
And Commissioner Awad.
And Commissioner, Commissioner Awad, thank you. Because this is a great program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Darren Schwartz? I don't think Louise is here, is she?
No.
Okay. Request approval to apply for two Connecticut State Department of Education Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center's grants for Duggan, Reed, Carrington, Gil Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So Louise couldn't make it tonight, but I, I brought some substitutes here with Jim O'Rourke from the YMCA and Dave Simpson from our Public Works Department, who's also overseeing the Parks Department that works in collaboration with us for many of the grants that we have for Twenty-First Century. Tonight, we're asking permission to apply for two grants from the, from, from the Connecticut State Department of Education. They, they would be five-year grants, they would be two grants that take place for our middle school students at our pre-K eight schools. This is also actually in conjunction with the Boost Program. The Boost Program did survey our students and our parents at the pre-K eight schools, specifically asking what, what students are interested in having in addition to what they already have for after-school programming. And so, using that information, we can then justify some of the changes that could make, take place after school just based on the student voice rather than what we think they want. It's always better to hear from, from them what they want, especially at the pre-K eights where they don't have, like the comprehensives, as many options for after-school programming. And so we're applying for this grant, five-year grant, through the Twenty-First Century. It would be approximately fifty students at each school, thirty weeks, two hours a day for three days a week. And again, the, the maximum for each grant is two hundred thousand for years one, two, and three, a maximum of one hundred fifty thousand for year four, and one hundred thousand for year five. One of the few things that we've been doing over the past month or so is, my office has been meeting with the YMCA and with, with Dave in his office on ensuring a, a few things. One, quality of programming, which we consistently, consistently score high on quality of programming when the state does their audits, but also making sure that we're crystal clear on organization, safety, structures, and operations of all the sites that we operate for Twenty-First Century right now. It's, it, we've gone through a, a few different, a few different meetings of lively discussions about how it should, how it should look, and I think we've settled on a, a structure that we, we all agree would benefit the students at, at each school. Currently, we'll have a, we'll have a lead teacher at each building, operating under an O-92 license, so that they, they will oversee the program at each site. They're the clear manager at each site. We'll have lead teachers at each school. We'll have, we'll have staff under the Recreation Department from, 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 from either partner. And there will also be, obviously, we have our grant writer at Central Office, but we're also looking to add a quality control person as well underneath the grant so that we have somebody on, on the ground available to all the programs across the city for our Twenty-First Century grants. And that is written right into the grant as well. That should be coming to Personnel Committee soon. I'll pass it over. If you, if you want to hear from Jim or Dave on current programming or the expectations of what they do for some of their Twenty-First Century programming, I'm assuming that might, might help.
They were nice to come, nice enough to come tonight. We'd love to hear from them.
Right from Boston. Right from Boston. So, thank you. The YMCA has been a partner with the Board of Education for about six years now. Our current Twenty-First Century programs that we're involved in, that we provide rec components to is Enlightenment School as well as North End. It's great to see the Enlightenment students actually walk over from Enlightenment to the YMCA, and they're able to use our programs right there specifically. They do spin class, they use our gymnasium, and they work with our staff to do team, team building. And then on North End, we send our rec staff up to there to assist the teachers. I believe in this current application, the Y will be the rec provider for Carrington as well as Gil Martin, and YMCA staff go through all the same type of procedures as the city's employees, making sure that background checks are completed, first aid CPR certified, and work with teachers hand-in-hand to make sure our quality program is provided for the students.
Great.
And Dave and his staff, they currently are working with us at Chase Barkhouse, Hopeville, Wilson, Driggs, Walsh, and Washington.
Just to state your name for the record.
David Simpson, Director of Public Works for the city of Waterbury. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. The Public Works Department has been a partner in the current Twenty-First Century after-school program at a number of locations and looks forward to partnering with both the School Department and the YMCA on the additional sites as we move into the future.
Great, thank you. Building these partnerships, it's great.
Well, one thing I do want to add in is that through the, although these are the main partners, we do partner and collaborate with other community organizations in the, in the city through the Twenty-First Century Grant where our students either go and visit those, those part of the city or outside the city. I'd like to name some of those partners now. The Waterbury Borough of Recreation, Bridge to Success Community, Waterbury Police Department, Fire Department, Department of Public Health, Safe Haven, Matituck, Mystic Seaport, Mystic Aquarium, Shakespearean, Seven Angels Theater, Palace Theater, Flanders Nature Center, Brass City Harvest, Health 360, Junior Achievement are, are the other major collaborators in this program. We're either, that are coming out after school to work with our students or we're taking our students there on, on... taking our students there on, on trips through the grant.
Great. Any questions? Ann?
Um, Darren, what's the, the city's match, the board's match in year four and year five?
The, it would be for, uh, it depends on how much we end up writing the grant for, so I guess, you know, that's a good question. So, uh, the grant will be submitted on, uh, deadline for proposal September 22nd, so when we have the final number of how much we apply for, it would be the, uh, it would be the, what we apply for minus the 150 for year four, minus the 100,000 for year five. Um, our Chief Financial Officer, uh, Doreen Biello, has approved the budgets, understanding that if awarded, there would be a local match needed in those years.
So if, if it was the whole 200,000, then the four-year, year four?
Would be 50,000.
Would be 50,000 and a, and 100,000 the following year.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Louise did want a consensus.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, could we have a consensus because we want to, uh, move this forward?
Yes.
Thank you. You have a consensus. Go forth.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I guess you're, you're up, and is Johanna here?
Of course.
Mrs. Hayes? Discussion job specifications for the proposed position of Assistant Talent Recruiter.
Nobody pushed my chair, and, all right.
There's a gentleman with.
Yes, very gentlemanly. Uh, so, uh, we're, we're here before you tonight, um, here with Johanna Hayes, who, as you know, is our Talent and Professional Development Supervisor, and, um, when we brought her into the position and we, uh, had her feedback from, um, what she's seen around the nation and from, uh, her experience and, and knowledge, in addition to work that we've been doing as a result with the CHRO, um, um, Committee, it was decide, and, and Dr. Tucker's feedback, thank you, uh, we, uh, we have decided that one person recruiting and retaining, in addition to working on professional development, it requires an office. Most other cities at, at this point, um, especially if you look at Hartford's model, they have multiple recruiters and a, and a, a very flourishing talent department, and all you'd have to do is go online to, to see how many, how many people they have doing this work. Uh, we think that we can do this with an Assistant Talent Recruiter, with Johanna's expertise and, um, with a, with secretarial support, and, um, this person would be reporting directly to Johanna. Uh, the funding would be through the Alliance Grant. Uh, you could see that the salary benefits are $42,000 to $50,000, and, um, and, and the job description is, is fairly clear, and, uh, in, in the fact that they would be mostly assisting and, um, collaborating with Johanna on the various items that it takes to recruit and retain top talent into our teaching corps. Um, I'll let Johanna go into a little bit about what the Assistant Recruiter, uh, would be doing, and how she sees this playing out in the, in the next few years to ensure that we're, we're, we're attracting, um, a diverse workforce, but a high-quality workforce, most importantly.
Good evening.
Good evening. I would say that the main function would be, um, that district and university piece, that, uh, the bridge between the work we do here and some of our teacher preparation programs in-state and out-of-state. It was my experience last year as I traveled and attended the fairs that I did, one person can't do this alone. We want to move to a model where we can interview on-site, where we can create partnerships and collaborative, collaborative, um, relationships with some of the other districts, with some of the teacher preparation programs, State Department of Education, and one person in that capacity can't do it. Um, this was one of the things that was, we had a great amount of discussion on, like Darren said, just moving around the idea of having, having a talent office, where we were a little bit more proactive as opposed to reactive, where we could support people who were here and really work on that retention piece, as well as the recruitment piece, not just finding people, but trying to create support so that people stay, and, um, just to have a fully functioning talent office, which is very different than just, um, human resources, where we're getting people here, but really creating a system where people will stay.
Thank you.
I just want, I just want to add on to that. It's, and sometimes it's easy to get caught up in the recruitment aspect of this. You know, retainment, we, we have approximately 1,600 teachers. If we don't do better at providing a, a more relevant and individualized professional development for them, other people will. They will go other places, and they will get, they will get possibly paid more if they leave, and so if we don't have a more laser-like focus on providing that for teachers, um, you know, we will, we will have more exiting, and as the, the teaching corps dries up in terms of people entering the field, the, the more lucrative top talent is, especially those that have been in our system and that have performed with our students, and so the retention piece is something that I know Johanna has seen across the nation. She has been able to make networks on how other districts have allowed and, and provided teachers with some individualized professional development. Again, um, teachers are professionals, and, and many times, they have specific interests and unique abilities, and, or, or they wa, are interested in certain aspects of the profession, um, but yet we don't, we don't deliver a, a, a possibility or opportunity for them to pursue that, and so this, the retention piece, um, i, is, is extremely important, and so this Assistant Talent Recruiter would take care of a lot of the, of the day-to-day, um, business behind the recruiting aspect of things, so that Johanna can go out and, and kind of scoop up that top talent, um, but also spend some more time on working with the departments on retaining our current talent that exists already here in the Waterbury Public Schools.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Stango? Oh, I thought you had a question.
Nope, nope.
Commissioner Theory.
Uh, just a couple of questions. What is the cost, number one, and how, how will it be funded?
That's, that's at the top of the, uh, the job description. The cost is $42,000 to $50,000 with SEIU benefits, and it is funded through the Alliance Grant.
Through the chair.
Chair.
Uh, so if it's going to be funded through the Alliance Grant, is that going to be a substitute of something that is not currently funded? Um, you know how I feel about the Alliance Grant. You know, the Alliance Grant is broken into two categories, the reform and the non-reform side. If we didn't have the Alliance Grant, this would come out of our budget and the general fund, so what I have said all along is that the Alliance Grant is used, I'm, I'm not going to refer to it as a slush fund, but it certainly looks like it's plu, used to plug holes in our general budget, and once again, we're taking money from the Alliance Grant and diverting it into two categories, the reform and the non-reform side, and certainly this is the non-reformer side. I see the value of the job, but I'm not entirely happy with taking more money out of the Alliance Grant, which was supposed to be used entirely for educational reform, and we see the dilemma that we're in right now with regard to our test scores and not doing the educational reform, and taking millions and millions of dollars out of the Alliance Grant, using it to plug the holes in our general fund, so we're not doing very good in reform. So I'm in favor of the job, but not in favor of the funding source. Thank you.
Do you want me to answer the?
Any other?
Yeah, I think he asked a question of what was taking place of.
Yep, yep.
So we secured more funding through the School Readiness Grant for preschool teachers, so preschool teachers that were in Alliance fell, we were able to divert them into the School Readiness Grant, which freed up money in the Alliance.
Through the chair.
Sure.
Uh, that's fine, you know, but, you know, it's, it's kind of the old scenario, robbing Peter to pay Paul. You know, you're, you're moving the chips around on the chessboard, and you're moving this out of here, and you're putting this in here. Uh, I think the Talented and Gifted Office and the work that our National Teacher of the Year is doing is exceptional, and there's no question that she needs some help, but, uh, once again, I'm, I'm a little bit chagrined on the motivation for the funding of the position. Thank you.
Just for clarification, it's the Talent Professional Development Office.
Okay.
Yep.
And she is gifted, too.
Oh, and I was also going to add, through Alliance, there's money that is specifically earmarked for, specifically minority teacher recruitment and retention, so that'll be funneled through, and so it, it's not moving it from somewhere else. That's what it was intended for.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Oh, Commissioner Harvey?
No, I thought Ann gave it to him.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead, yep.
Thank you. Um, just want to say that, um, as Chair of the, um, Advisor Committee for CHRO Recommendations, I am thrilled, uh, to see this move forward. It's, it's obvious that if we have a talent and development office, that you need a staff to do it, and so I look forward, um, to this. When, when do you anticipate, Darren, um, posting, you know, it's approved next week, when do you anticipate posting this position?
If it were approved by the Board on Thursday, posting on Friday.
That sounds good to me. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, next job description.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. Uh, before you, we have a, um, position for an Early Childhood Special Education Supervisor. Title, actually went back and forth in workshop about what we would call this specific position. Um, again, this would report to the Director of Special Education, funding through the Alliance Grant, again, 500, we secured about $500,000 more through our School Readiness Grant to pay for, uh, preschool teachers, and through attrition, as Doreen Biello went to the workshop to explain to the committee, um, that's where it would be funded through. Uh, besides all the specific examples of the duties, uh, working not only at the Bucksville Annex and as the supervisor, uh, that would provide the, uh, expertise, uh, also at the Early Childhood, um, the Office of Early Childhood, where, uh, last year alone, they processed over 300 PPTs for the Annex, and, um, I just want to go over some numbers for you of why we're putting this position in front of you today. Uh, as you, as you know from our previous, uh, as our previous reports to you, our Special Education numbers continue to grow, uh, specifically at the Early Childhood level, in 13, 2013, 14, 41 students had identified needs, uh, 14, 15, that jumped to 94, 15, 16, 102, 16, 17, 127, and as of last time, I was talk, I talked to Principal Blakesley, um, we're up to, um, 161 for the current year, and, um, that, 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 that does not include the amount of referrals and evaluations that are done, uh, for students at that, at that, um, at that, in that age group, so that's just our, uh, students going to the Annex, and, and I, I think there's a few things that I want to cover that we covered in workshop. Um, number one, Maurice is there, uh, on an island, really by herself, in the Annex. It's approximately, uh, fluctuates the number. They built, they're built for 250. I think right now they're, hover around 220, 230, um, at the Annex, so we have about 220, uh, three- and four-year-olds, uh, many with significant needs, and, uh, Principal Blakesley's human like everyone else. Um, she gets sick, she gets injured, um, she has to attend meetings, and when she leaves the building, we, we don't have anyone else with an 092, so we can't get a TVP in there. Um, we usually, uh, have to scramble somebody else to leave another building to cover, usually a special ed supervisor, previously Amy Sims, would, would run up there, um, and, and cover the, cover the building, which would leave her, um, um, whatever she had for that day, and her PPTs in the other buildings would, they'd have to scramble their buildings and cover for that, um, and so, uh, there's also a, uh, there's, there's not just a good reason because the numbers are increasing and because the amount of staff that they have at the building, including, um, support staff, a lot of support staff, assistants, uh, paras, uh, BTs, um, that, that are also have to be evaluated throughout the building, but there's also a liability issue there, um, that, that we covered at the, at the workshop, where we talked about ensuring that we have a, um, second set of hands in that building for our youngest and most vulnerable students. Would they be housed at the Annex, um, every day, all day? Uh, I could, I, I would say no. I would say, um, most days they'd be working in the Annex, um, but I, I would, I would say that they would also be working, um, hand-in-hand with our Office of Early Childhood, where evaluations are taking place for many of our students. Just to remind the group, the reason why we moved the evaluations and PPTs to 30B Church Street was because many of our parents were struggling to get to the Annex. Bus routes, don't go up to that, it's, it's on a, it's on a, it's on a section of town that's not always easy to get to. We've heard stories of, um, parents pushing their children up in wheelchairs, up that hill, to get to a PPT. We moved it to 30B, and surprised, parents are attending, um, and that's more anecdotal. We, I wish we had the, the numbers, how many they missed before that, but that is, uh, it, it is hopping. If you go to 30B Church, it's hopping, and it's a great thing to see. Um, so this person would also, uh, also be taking part in the PPTs and 504s happening there. Among the other things that we have written down for this job description, so a supervisor dedicated to our youngest children, as that population continues to grow, um, we felt was necessary, and, um, I don't know if Melissa has anything else to add, if that covers it.
I actually visited the Annex today. I was there for a couple of hours. I was observing, um, our youngest children, and it's, it's, it's a wonderful thing to do. Some of the children are, are very severe. My, my concern, and, and there, there's a big list here, my largest concern is that if Maurice is not there and there's no administrator in the building, that, that's my biggest concern is for, is for those young kids, cause we do have over 160 children there with special needs, um, and then the rest of them are still three and four years old. It's not like they're 10 or 11 or 12, I, they, they have their own set of needs, a lot of them are still in diapers. I'd say the majority of them are still in diapers, so there, there's just a, a very, very visible need, and Maurice is all over the building, making sure things are going well, and making sure everybody's safe, and, and doing what needs to be done, and, and we do have our Easter Seal staff up there, too, and, and we have to keep an eye on them. They, they are contracted employees, but we, we do have to make sure they are supervised well as, yeah.
And I, and I also just don't, don't forget that, you know, there's, there's, these are teachers in classrooms, they also go to instructional data teams, they also have evaluations, they also do lesson planning, they also have all of the other tasks that every teacher, um, does in our district, and that has to be monitored by a supervisor as well, on top of the 300 PPTs that I incurred last year for that building alone, NIAC certification, and so, um, it is a, it is, it is a cost, and I'm sure that's a concern of many people on the Board, again, um, some of this money, because we were able to secure more through school readiness, um, keeping it at preschool. I'd also, I'd also say, think about this, the Bucksville Annex, if those students, if we didn't have a program within our community for those students, the cost of not having that program would be much more astronomical, um, and so.
Commissioner Manstow.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Uh, the first one, uh, you know, I knew it, it by definition did fit into the Alliance Grant, so I, I didn't really ask any questions there. This one, however, I will struggle with, um, and I'll also struggle with, well, first off, you didn't, you didn't, I guess that's second off, you didn't tell us a salary.
It's a, I'm sorry, it's, it's a SAW salary for 12-month supervisors.
And that is?
It would start at 100, approximately 100,000, 100.
26.
1, 126, and I think it goes to approximately 124,000.
I, I think I've done my homework to understand special education fairly well in the city. Not a regular, but an often visitor to the office downtown, um, and staying up on much of the legislation. However, here we go again with another six-figure salary, and I'll ask my question that I always ask, and one, why does it need to be a supervisor, and why are we not developing, cause it'd be a great career path for people, things like a deputy position, someone that will prepare to become a supervisor? We jump everyone to supervisor, but no one's on a path to become a supervisor. I've never seen anything run like this. Um, so I'll struggle greatly with this one, not the previous. Um, I, I We jump everyone to supervisor, but no one's on a path to become a supervisor. I've never seen anything run like this. So I'll struggle greatly with this one, not the previous. I just don't see how we plug in another six-figure salary, going into the Alliance Grant to pay for it, whether, you know, and I was the one who pushed years ago, when you want to do this, show me an offset. You kind of did tonight, so I appreciate that part of it. So I'm going to struggle very much. But my, so my only question is, why didn't we consider something along the lines of a deputy or assistant or whatever you want to put in front of supervisor, to bring someone along and not jump everyone right into these supervisor positions?
So in order to run a PPT, you don't necessarily need your O-92. However, if we're going to leave somebody in charge of a building and evaluating staff and, and ensuring safety, that person has to have their O-92. They have to be an administrator in order to take care of a building if Maurice is not there. That can't be a teacher that is going for their O-92 or, or even that, we have the sped team leader position. It can't be one of those people, because they don't, they don't have their administrator's degree.
I also would say that you don't necessarily need your O-92, but I would not feel comfortable with somebody that did not have the experience, that has sat through several PPTs at this level with this population. This isn't your run-of-the-mill learning disability, possibly, or even emotional. This is, if you've been in the Annex, you know the, you know the students that go there. You need someone veteran, you need someone that has the experience, that can not only command the respect through a PPT, but has the experience to really understand the needs of the children at this level. I agree with you. That's why we're trying the special ed team leader position. Maybe we, eventually, we will not need as many supervisors, possibly in special ed, as we, as we look at our upper grades for running your, your, your daily PPTs for, and that's why we're trying that. But in this specific case, not just because of the severity of the students, but also there is that, that second piece of being in the building, especially, you know, who responds to the crisis when Maurice is running the instructional data team? Or what do you think happens when Maurice is in a, in a room that has to do a 45-minute evaluation on every single certified staff, three to five times a year? The building is hopping constantly. And so it's, it's also not exactly fair to all the teachers in the building to always get the proper feedback that they're supposed to get, because Maurice is pulled out quite often from those, from those very basic functions of a supervisor. I don't want to overkill it.
You are overkilling it.
But, but, but we did get 500,000 more through our school readiness grant to specifically pay for preschool, that we could divert out of Alliance.
And I'll bring another industry term here, is the five whys. And I really don't see this position passing the five whys. We just, the previous job, we were able to go to an assistant-type person, and that was okay. Now this position, which is obviously new, right? We, and this is, I mean, we're talking dollars and cents here, whether it's Alliance, which act, actually, like Commissioner Therry, that aggravates me a little more. Somehow, we got by without this before. So there's no way this position passes the five whys. Special ed, you know how close to my heart that is, but in this case, at this level, at supervisory, at six figures, I'm not getting there. So, sorry.
Well, I, I will just say, at 13, 14, we had 41 students, and this year, we have 160, over 161 currently, that have special ed needs in that building. That's a five-year change of 400 percent.
Okay, so maybe I'll give you one of the five whys. It's, it's just not passing the test, so, sorry. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I just want to, in the Personnel Committee, I was struck by the added weight that the building itself, the Annex, the, just the, the whole, you know, portable classrooms and everything, the, the whole space issue up at the Annex really exacerbates the need for more supervision, because, because it's just so inadequate up there, and it's something we need to, you know, think about long-term. And so I, that kind of was, was important to me in terms of the space issue, in addition to the, to the huge increase in students who are there. And having spent a lot of time up at the Annex, I, I, I can't even imagine how one person can supervise that building. And we have been underserved, I think. So that, that, I just wanted to put that out there, that that was, I was really struck by the physical plant of the Annex. It's just, it's not conducive to, to what we're trying to do there. So it exacerbates the situation. Anyway, Commissioner Therry, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Along the lines of what President Brown said, I think that the Personnel Committee really vetted these two positions out. Actually, we sent them out to come back again with revisions. And I want to compliment you and Johanna and Doreen for putting that effort in, because we did have a lot of questions.
Right.
And, and, and to Commissioner Van Stone's point of a pathway and a, what else did you call it? A deputy? And I, I think that the committee threw out a question to, to you, Darren, about, what about a supervising vice principal for that school, which would have come in with much less money? And you answered that question. Maybe, just for clarity, maybe you can answer that question again. Why not a supervising vice principal assigned to Bucksville Annex?
Well, because I, and again, supervising vice principal doesn't necessarily need a special education background. And so that would be the, that would be the major piece of this and, or pre-K certification, necessarily. I mean, you could look for somebody for that, but the SVP and SVP test, the way it works is that you don't, you can't clarify having that specific certification for the top three candidates that you would have to select. That would be the major piece behind that. But then, in addition, this person wouldn't be just at the Annex all day, every day. They would be working at 30B, and they would be collaborating with the preschool supervisor with other preschools, because it's not that all the special ed students go to the Annex as well. There are other students that are in our pre-K programs throughout the city, and we would want this person to also have a, have a hand in that.
Okay. And, and the other thing that came up at the Personnel Committee meeting was your requirement. And the requirement is three.
Yes.
It's an O-92.
Yes.
It's a special education requirement.
Yes.
And it's a preschool endorsement.
Correct.
And the concern that came up at the, at the committee meeting was also, do you think that that is a pie in a sky requirement that, that we're looking for here? That is quite detailed. I mean, it gets to, broad to really a pinnacle. Yeah.
I, I think, I think there's, there's, this is the way we see this position working. And if we cannot find the proper person, then we will go back to the drawing board. But, you know, I feel strongly that this is, this is what we need at this point. Now, if we can't get somebody, I'd, I'd, we'd, we'd have to come up with something where we wouldn't water down the position because of the need that exists. But as of right now, I'd rather shoot for the, shoot for the sky and have somebody that has these certifications. And they do exist. There are people with preschool and special education. There, there's, there's, there's a certification that does both as well, so, so we'll, we'll make sure, we look for that as well.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Just a question. Do you know if we have any SVPs on staff right now that have a certificate in special education or has a special education background that might be interested?
SVPs?
I think that's what Charles asked, right?
Supervising vice principal.
Vice principal.
SVPs.
SVPs that have a special education and, without having the list in front of me, and an early childhood background. I would say, off the top of my head, no. I'm sure there are some, there are several that have special education backgrounds.
So we didn't look into that?
Well, if I posted it as an SVP, then I would be, I would have to count on a lateral transfer then, if that, and then I would be, because of the narrow, so say there are, there is one or two, that means I'm pretty much opening that position for those one or two people. Because as, if those two don't take the lateral transfer, which I don't even think any exist, then it just goes to a list that may not have any of these certifications at all.
That's civil service.
That civil service has a list. You have to pick from the top three. They may not, they might be a high school tech teacher right now, and they would be on that list. So that's why we thought supervisor, that could clarify specifically what we're looking for, not an SVP. We did look at that at first, that, obviously, but the more we hashed it out, it didn't make sense.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you. I just, I just want to add to that, because what Commissioner brings up is very interesting, the fact that we don't maybe automatically know. Another thing we do in industry is also, we sit down with people who are in a position, but maybe want to be something else. Do we do anything like that in HR to maybe establish personal goals or goals that maybe a supervisor sees in someone, that maybe we send them towards certifications in different arenas? Do we do that with our, our employees?
Yeah, I think, well, there's kind of two questions there. One, we don't like to select candidates before we create positions. Obviously, that's not a, that's not a, something that we would.
And that's not what I was referring to. I'm referring to knowing our employees.
Yes.
Knowing what they would like to do, helping them create that career path.
Well, it's a, it's a great question.
I guess that's our new office, certainly will do that, right?
That's our recruiter. Right, that's, that's what I was getting at with, when we're talking about retainment, that you have to know your employees. You have to know what they're passionate about. You have to know what they're interested in. And I think, you know, when I do it, when I do it with the staff that I, I supervise, it's through that evaluation process. It's that sit-down, those one-on-ones, those conversations. It's also just getting to know the person as well, and having those, that time to be able to just chat and, and find out what they're interested in and passionate about, but usually through more of a formal process. But I could foresee, you know, Johanna and I have had conversations, brief conversations about really knowing what people's certifications are, getting, and you can't do it without the conversation. You can't just do it by the lists and finding out what your certification is. You have to do it with the person in the, the evaluator supervisor in the school. Johanna's already done it with a few people, especially in teaching certifications. Relay is part of that, right? Like, what are you interested in? Are you going in, interested in the teaching? Do you have the qualifications? I think she even has a, I think she even has a, has a story where they, they found that a para had a teaching certification, and there was a shortage in that area. Was that right?
Bilingual.
Is that right? And then, so guess what we did?
But that's to my point.
Right.
You know, I went off track a little bit, Madam President. Sorry about that, but I took a little left turn. But what Commissioner Hernandez said made me think, and I guess we are doing some form of 180 interview-type things, right?
Well, we just started. One of the things I did was, at the para orientation, had anyone who had any interest in teaching, sign up on a list, and there were almost 100 people with their college information, their background information, forwarding me transcripts. And I've been going down that list, calling every single person, I'm up to like 64, and asking them to send me a copy of their transcripts and just wherever they are, trying to figure out, okay, what would the pathway from here be? Some people are ready, right at the door for certification. There are a couple of people who may even be eligible for DSAT. We have people working in the district who had undergraduate and master's degrees, working as tutors, just never applied in, because they didn't have a teaching certification. But it's enough where if I contact the state and have a conversation about this individual person, we can get it on track. So right now, I'm at number 66 on the list. It's a list of about 140 people who signed up, and I'm getting emails every day from people who are in different capacities, people who want to be cross-certified and don't know what else they have to do. So it's something that I just started. I'm not sure how formal it was before I came, but, it wasn't formal before I came, but it's something that I am working on.
Great. I appreciate, again, sorry to go off topic a little bit, but it just made me think that, to my point of looking for deputies, pathway, et cetera, these were great answers, so thanks. Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Commissioner Therry.
Yeah, this is a perfect segue for me to compliment the aides that work for us. I mean, if, if I could say they work as hard as the teachers, some of them work harder. And I hear this tremendous frustration out there, because they probably make about 20 to 25 percent, if that, of what a teacher makes. And now they have to be degreed in order to work as an aide. And, you know, I think somewhere down the line, I don't want to use Alliance money again, because sooner or later, the bucket's going to run dry. But we need to do something about properly paying our aides, so that we give them the proper remuneration that they should be getting down the line. And that also applies to the secretaries of our buildings, who are really not secretaries anymore, but more executive assistants, similar to what the superintendent has. So somewhere down the line, we need to look at the pay that our aides, especially in special ed, because these people are, when they die, they're going right to the gates of heaven, no stopping, right in. You know, because these people that work with our special ed staff that have these tremendous, tremendous problems, the kids I'm talking about, you couldn't get a kinder, gentler hand in terms of dealing with the kids. I had the opportunity to experience some of the interaction of the aides with the kids at Bucksville, and I'm telling you, they are, they are in for sainthood. So, and that goes for our other aides down at Walsh, where I had the opportunity to work with them. And you know how I feel about the aides and the reduction of class size and more aides in the classroom. But at some point in the future, we need to look at the pay scale for these people and these employees, and make sure that they get the proper remuneration. Thank you.
I agree. Okay, thank you very much. Number six, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. Any questions? Commissioner?
Yeah. Several board members had expressed an interest. When Mr. Brinker came and said we were going to increase the cost of the program by $1, several members had expressed opinions in the past several meetings. And I'm going to send you out an email asking you what your concerns are, whether you're a member of the team, a member of the committee, facility, schools, and grounds, or you're not. I want your input. I want your opinion, so that when we have the meeting, maybe in a couple of weeks, two or three weeks, we can sit down and discuss all your concerns. You know, we kind of did it the last time, and we need to get our central office people in there, and maybe you, Bob, and go over these things in more detail, especially with the concerns in terms of Karen Harvey saying that there was a conflict, you know, we need to take care of our own first. Other members looking at, you know, we did this in the past, and we keep doing it, and maybe we should be looking at it and putting a stronger filter on it in terms of who gets, who gets the freebies and who doesn't. You know, who's a nonprofit and who's not a nonprofit. So all of those concerns, I welcome the board's opinion on, and I'll send a, I'll send a email out through the clerk of the board, and she can collate those opinions, and then we can put them in a packet and address them at our meeting. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. And numbers, oh, Commissioner Harvey?
Just, just, if I can just echo, not echo, but just piggyback on, on your comment, Commissioner Therry, through the chair. I would hope that we will also, there's some other things that we need to look at. I was going to send you an email, because there's other things that need to be looked at in addition to that. So I will send that to you.
Yeah, sure.
Tomorrow, for your recommend, you know, just to look at, to put, to put that on the agenda. Thank you.
Let's have a thorough vetting.
Very good.
Of the whole thing.
I'm with you. Thank you.
Okay. Number seven, use of school facilities by outside organizations. And number eight, superintendent's notification to the board. And no executive session? And, yes?
I, I think your comment, and when I came in, President Brown, needs to be reflected upon, the great job they did here at Kennedy on the gym, one example of the great job our custodians and maintenance people are doing. I, I think your comment, and when I came in, President Brown, needs to be reflected upon, the, the great job they did here at Kennedy on the gym, one example of the great job our custodians and maintenance people are doing with our facilities. Certainly is a, come a long way from the video that I did about seven or eight years ago. We've come a long way in rectifying many of the situations that we had in our buildings that were dilapidated and uncared for and really neglected for thirty to forty years. Now we're on top of it, painting the, the gym, doing the parking lots and other things, summer programs and so forth. So kudos to you, Mr. Brinker, and your staff, and especially the head of our, our school maintenance department, who has done an absolutely phenomenal job. John Cross did a lot of that before this other individual came along, but this man has certainly stepped forward and is doing an outstanding job, so kudos to him and all of his maintenance staff, all of his people, all of his plumbers, electricians, carpenters, all the people, where, they make us very proud when we walk into our buildings, and we need to stay on top of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
See, no further business?
Motion to adjourn. So moved.
Did you want to say something?
Absolutely not. Yeah, I guess so. That's what I was waiting for.